This evening is the last full meeting with the council you see here seated tonight. Our next meeting, the first one in May, will be a transition from this council to the next. Commissioners Marge Earl and Kavanaugh Gray will be moving on to other endeavors, so we did want to take a few minutes this evening to recognize the work they've done and thank them for the service to our community. Traditionally, an evening like this includes things like hugs and high fives, handshakes, cake, a gathering of friends and family and colleagues to celebrate the work done and those who are transitioning on. It's usually in the committee room here at Village Hall, but tonight COVID is still with us. It's still changing the way we do things, so tonight will be a little different as well. Nonetheless, Kavanaugh and Marge, we do have a few small gifts to commemorate your service, and I know your colleagues all have a few things they'd like to say along the way. Let me start with a thank you, though. I want to thank Akua, Gabriel, and William Gray. I want to thank Ed and Kate Earl. Thank you for sharing your family with the village and for giving of your family's time for the betterment of Downers Grove. We recognize that some of those times aren't easy, some of those times aren't fun, but we appreciate your sacrifice as well. Commissioner Gray, when I think of Kavanaugh, I think of the words insight and thoughtful. Webster defines insight as the act or result of apprehending the inner nature of things. It defines thoughtful as careful, reasoned thinking. Since his appointment to the village council in 2019, Kavanaugh has shared his unique entrepreneurial leadership and social perspectives in thoughtful and insightful ways for the betterment of Downers Grove. Kavanaugh is a lifelong entrepreneur and small business development specialist with more than two decades of experience implementing strategies that help startups scale. You heard him talk about returning to some of that activity. I hope it hasn't gone by the wayside in the interim. He has a diverse background working in marketing, media publishing, technology, energy, nonprofit, and startup industries. His degrees in finance, marketing allow him to bring a unique business perspective to this role, a unique perspective that's different from each one of us. He talked about puzzle pieces, indeed, seven puzzle pieces, hopefully working for the betterment of the village. Kavanaugh has a longstanding commitment to social entrepreneurship, and over the years has used small business as a tool for addressing a variety of social issues. He established a nationally recognized nonprofit, The Young Entrepreneurs Program, which focused on providing entrepreneurial and financial literacy training as well as alternatives to unemployment, low-paying jobs, and destructive life choices of students. The number of times that I heard Kavanaugh talk about something related to education, it was every other time. So I really hope that you're able to keep that, those wheels turning. Our community is better, our school systems are better if you're helping them out. Kavanaugh has a way of leading rather than pushing, of helping others see around their blind spots and past their own experiences. So little of our future is as planned as we might hope. We think we know what tomorrow is, but our plans are seldom ours. Yet in our own unique way, we all contribute to that unknown future if we have the will to do so when it comes. You spoke about that, not knowing what's coming, not knowing exactly what would happen. From COVID pandemic to increased awareness of ongoing racial injustice, 2020's reality was certainly not what any of us expected in 2019. Mr. Gray's time serving the community on this council, his willing heart and his unique ability to help others see things differently was a blessing to us all. It was those unique experiences from Chicago to Champaign to DC to Carbondale to Downers Grove, did you get them all?
Yeah, I think so.
That's shown through in his insightful and thoughtful contributions to this body. Whether it was here in council chambers at McCullum Park or at the train station, Kavanaugh, I appreciate your service to Downers Grove. I thank you personally for your counsel as part of this team, and I wish you the best going forward.
Thank you.
I think your colleagues all have something to say as well. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor.
Kavanaugh, thank you for your service. Thank you for always making me think. Every time you had something to say, it always, it gave a perspective that was unique and made me reexamine where I was and what I was thinking. And I hope you take that as the compliment that I intended to make. We are a better council and a better village for your service. And my only regret is that I've only gotten to serve with you for two years. Thank you. Thank you. Marge?
Kavanaugh, I've been doing this a long time, and one of the things that you brought to this council was fresh eyes. And for people who have been doing this a long time or sitting here and thinking the same, along the same lines for a long time, we forget what we know and we forget what we don't know, that we need to sit here and we need to listen and we need to do better. And Greg's right, you've always given us more and more food for thought and not always in the way I think was expected, but definitely a new way of thinking and looking at things that will make the whole community better for it. And me personally, you said something to me once that really stuck with me, and you were talking about when you lose the peace and quiet in your home, how it doesn't serve you or anyone else well. And that really kind of hit home for me during this pandemic, and I was faced with a lot of stuff changing at my house, and hence why I am also leaving, because I have realized that there are other people can sit here and do this job and learn this job and do it just as well as I can. It'll take them a little time to get there, that's fine. I'm not going anywhere. I'm probably going to be sitting in the back of the room, but I know that I have other things that I also have to attend to. And as much as I've loved serving this community, my family comes first, and you've reinforced that with your own family, and that is extremely important. And so I think we're probably going to be spending a little bit more time at home with our families than they're used to seeing us lately. So thank you, thank you for putting things in perspective. Thank you for saying not just what we need to hear, but saying it in a way that allows us to hear. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Nicole?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start out by saying that village council is like a club that can only be understood by those who are brave enough to join it. You can talk to your family and friends about it, but no one really gets it except for the people that have sat up here at some point. The length of time that you serve doesn't matter, it's that you took the leap to do so in the first place. I remember Kavanaugh's interview for our open council appointment. He was a presence, and you could tell that he was wise, and I don't mean just a book smart kind of wise, I mean this worldly intelligence, something that cannot be learned but was simply just a part of him based on his life experiences and service in other capacities, because Kavanaugh's been serving for an incredibly long time, just not up here. Since his appointment, he's certainly challenged me personally. He's caused me to think deeper about certain issues, look at things from different angles, and have discussions that were not necessarily within my comfort zone, but I told him I would continue to work on that. And even when he leaves us, I want him to know that my commitment to furthering my own knowledge on things that he is passionate about will remain true. There are more times than I can count that when he spoke, I truly didn't know how I could have done a better job contributing to what was just said. He had simply just said it so eloquently. Kavanaugh, your passion and your insights will be greatly missed, and it's been an honor serving with you. Thank you.
Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. It has truly been an honor to get to know Kavanaugh. I am so grateful that you joined us at the time when you did. As you mentioned, you are the first to tell you something that is going to make someone uncomfortable, and everyone needs that. The only way that we can get better is to challenge ourselves every day, but you are also the first to just embrace people with the greatest kindness. I can't tell you how many times that I was lucky enough to, you know, just run something by you on the phone or just, you know, have a basic conversation about family or something that's going on in the community, and I genuinely hope that we get to continue that friendship. And I am just glad that you came in when you did. And you have always held yourself with more grace than I think that I could ever muster. And I think that everybody probably knows that up here, and part of that I admire, but also there's a part of me that knows you have to. And so I'm just grateful for the time we spent up here, and I hope you get to enjoy your family. I hope you get to spend time doing the things that you're passionate about and that you love, and I hope that there is some way that we can all get to work together again, because I've so enjoyed my time up here with you. So, thank you.
Rich?
I did not know Kavanaugh until he came for the interview to fill the mayor's position, and as Ben already stated, he was new to village government. But in the time that I got to know him, over a couple of beers early on, and these on-camera sessions, I came to know him, had this very thoughtful guy who was just had all of this world experience and wisdom around teaching entrepreneurs how to be entrepreneurs. He definitely brought a unique perspective to this day, and the village is better because of it. And I came to learn that he was a guy that cared about his family deeply, he cared about this village deeply, and he cared about the village a lot more when it was related to his family and wasn't afraid to let us know that. So I consider it an honor serving with you. You served in an honorable way with distinction, and I wish you the best of luck in everything you do moving forward. I know you'll be successful at any endeavor.
Doug, you got a little something?
Are you there? Nope. Sounds like a good one. This might be the best thing I've ever seen. Now it's a party.
Kavanaugh, the floor is yours if you have anything else you'd like to add.
You know what, like I said, I have just enjoyed this work, service. I've enjoyed the work of service and serving people, and I'm looking forward to serving this community in different capacity. We all have different things coming, but I'm just excited about what we all get to do going forward. We have had a rough go. Future is bright. Thank you.
Commissioner Earl?
Mayor Burnout.
I thought about some words that come to mind for you as well.
I bet.
You know what I came back to is stewardship and selflessness. Stewardship, the careful, responsible management of something entrusted to one's care, and selfless as the careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care, and selfless, I read it twice, selfless as the thoughtful putting of others first. My interaction with Marge, I know the motivation for the work she did on behalf of the village was driven by a deep sense of both stewardship and selflessness. Marge Earl was appointed to the village council in August 2016 and has been dedicated to serving the Downers Grove community in a variety of leadership roles for many, many years. Prior to her appointment to the village council, Commissioner Earl served the village in a variety of roles as a member of the zoning board of appeals from 2007 to 2016, as chair in 2015. She was also a member of both the 2010 and 2016 comprehensive planning ad hoc committees and the 2007 ad hoc housing committee. Marge has played a significant role in the planning and development of policy for our village, often leading the conversation in ways that will have a lasting, lasting impact. In no particular order, a couple of highlights. Historic preservation efforts. Twenty-three properties were designated as historic landmarks during Commissioner Earl's tenure. Many of those properties were identified as historically significant in the historic preservation survey, which Marge worked on as volunteer time prior to her council time. Belmont Pollinator Garden, Marge played a lead role in creating the pollinator garden at the Belmont Underpass. In 2017, Marge was a key drafter of the 2017 comp plan, both as a council member and as a member of the comp plan ad hoc committee. Also in 2017, downtown planning and rezoning. Commissioner Earl played a leadership role in updating the plan for downtown, making sure future development needs met community needs and expectations, and in rezoning 77 properties to better align with that updated plan. In 2018, Commissioner Earl played a leadership role in crafting new regulations to minimize stormwater runoff generated by construction of new homes and large additions. 2018 and 19, Marge was a key supporter of our efforts to reinstate and enhance the high school peer jury restorative justice program. In 2019, Marge drove the conversation with strengthened tree preservation regulations, causing the village to impose stringent requirements for protecting and preserving public trees, especially related to private construction activities. In all that Marge has done for the village dating back more than 15 years, that record makes clear her selflessness, her stewardship-driven approach to leadership, and it's been to the benefit of all of us now and for many, many years to come. On behalf of the village of Downers Grove and me personally, thank you, Marge. There have been moments where we have not seen eye down.
That is true.
And those go back many years. But the one thing that I have always left those conversations with that is a blessing, really, is a sure sense that what drove you was a better Downers Grove, and it was never about Commissioner Earl. And I think that that's something that all of us should aspire to. Serving our community in a way that puts the community first is something that everyone struggles with. It's hard to do this job. Mr. Wallace talked about it being a club. It's a little hard to do this job and sometimes not look in the mirror and wonder what you're doing, but Marge put herself second or third or fifth and did the work, the work that you see here, but the work that you hear about, the reason I mention some of those things in the background as well. It's hard work to pull a village along in ways that will preserve things, in ways that will make a better future, and Marge has done it not only in her time up here but for a decade or more before. So thank you. God bless you and Godspeed.
Thank you, Bob.
Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. We go back quite a while, back to pretty much my arrival in the village. The word that came to me earlier, thinking about all of the different highlights that Bob just talked about, and I thought in particular about the historic preservation survey and the way you went around and photographed these homes and tried to make that catalog come to life for people. The word in my mind is dedication. I don't know that I've known anybody as dedicated to the village of Downers Grove as you have been during your service, and it goes all the way back to all of your volunteer hours. And the way you consistently were at so many meetings, whether you were on the board or not, whether it's the zoning board, whether you were at a planning commission meeting, weighing in public comments on petition after petition, making sure that the village was thoughtful and responsive to all of its residents. You carry forward something I think is a great thing that we learned on the land use boards. You always went out to visit the subject property, and it didn't matter how many items were on the agenda, you were visiting all of them, walking all of them, and really taking in the area, the neighborhood, and everything that went into it. And you brought that from the zoning board, you brought that from the planning commission, and I know you continued it with every single petition that we had up here that had anything to do with the neighbors. And that kind of dedication is second to none. And all along the way, you have brought tremendous joy along the way. You can tell that you love the work because you love the village, and that joy, I think, has shown itself throughout your time, whether it's volunteering or on one of the boards or up your own council. And I'm going to miss it. Thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you've done for the village, and thank you in advance for everything you're going to do in the future, because I know you're not going.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Kavanaugh, you ready to go?
I think about when I came into this position, and you are basically, I'm an information person, so I love it, I'm like an information junkie, but when you step into this role of reading several books a week, then you're kind of like, well, wait a minute, I need to adjust my whole outlook from this. What I loved about Marge when I came in, whereas I felt like there was that window where I was trying to figure it out, Marge's approach was kind of like, hey, stick with me, kid, I'll help you figure this thing out, which I greatly appreciated. It was never kind of pushed, it was never kind of urgent, it was just, I got you, just follow me and I'll show you the ropes. Marge, in the time that I've been here, what I wrote down was your approach to policy issues, kind of this knowledge, this depth of knowledge that you brought to each of these issues. You never felt service. I can say that there are issues that I didn't have a deeper understanding on, a stormwater. I'd have to be there, what, another 20-plus years to kind of have an inkling, but your knowledge base of all these issues is what really amazed me, the commitment to our community. You feel that deeply when you interact with, as I said, Marge Earl. So you guys probably know this, when Marge sits down, I call her Marge Earl pretty much every week, and it's kind of a term of endearment. I know she's like, wow, I've heard when you call me Marge, my full name. So that's just kind of a little term of endearment that I had for you, hey, Marge Earl. But your commitment to our community is very evident, and I think just kind of the subtle approach that you have brought to deep impacted issues, okay? And all that's fantastic, but what I will say that I will miss or what I remember most was after this whole area cleared out, you and I just sat in Baker's room, Mike, I'm so sorry, we always took over your room, please forgive us, and we just sat in there and just had a little talk. And I think despite everything that we've been able to do collectively, I will remember that and miss that most. Thank you, Marge.
Nicole?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2016, when I interviewed for an open council seat and didn't get it, I found out that a woman named Marge Earl got it instead, and I had learned that for about 10 or so years, Marge had been involved in the village through all these other outlets, so it made sense to me that she was chosen. And then a few weeks later, another seat became open, and they called me back to interview, and a new face sat across from me, and it was Marge. And we had never met before that night. She looked very serious and had this air about her that I perceived as total and utter confidence about who she was. She asked me a ton of questions that I felt like I answered horribly. I remember going home and telling my husband Mark, Marge Earl totally hates me, so I'm probably not going to get this seat either. And she knows this story, so she's not hearing this for the best time. We've had a good laugh about it. So when I ended up getting appointed for this role, you know, in 2016, only a few weeks after she had, she was one of the first ones to call and congratulate me, this woman that I thought hated me. And we talked for 45 minutes on the phone that evening. Marge and I could not be more different. She's quiet, I'm very loud. She's calm, I'm this type A personality filled with a ton of energy. I tend to overthink, and she is much more concise. We have some different political views, but we have found common ground on many issues serving in a nonpartisan capacity up here. She's challenged me to think about things differently, and I hope that I've along the way done the same for her. What many people don't know about Marge is just how intelligent she is and how kind and selfless. You may not know this because she isn't one to be out in a big crowd or be in the spotlight. Counsel is something that is not necessarily in her comfort zone, but she took on this challenge head-on because she cares so deeply about this community. There are many things I will miss about serving with her, but I will certainly miss the knowledge she is bringing with her about issues from the past that still affect us today. Her ability to spot something in a staff report that I happen to think about maybe from another angle, but it caused me to consider her point, and the candor and friendship that we've established while serving together on this board that has allowed me to gain a lifelong friend and sounding board along the way. Thank you both, really, for your invaluable service. Marge and Kavanaugh, I know that this is not a goodbye, but more of a, we'll see you later. Thank you, Mayor.
Leslie?
Yes, thank you. There have certainly been plenty of times when Marge and I have disagreed on topics up here, but there have been plenty of times where we have been able to sit down and have some really valuable conversations. I remember when I was running for council, she was also running a campaign at the time, and I felt lucky that there were other women that were running campaigns at the time that we could, you know, discuss some of the nuances that were out there. I was lucky to have that then, and I really found that valuable, and Marge was one of the first to kind of, like many said, just talk to you and take you under her wing and give you a little bit of comfort maybe when you've had a tough campaign day or somebody goes on the attack. Just as Nicole said, I am similar to Marge, then I am normally a little bit more quiet, and this is certainly also outside of my comfort zone, so I can understand fully how hard it is for you to have put yourself out there for this long. But I think one of the things I'm going to miss the most is, Marge is probably one of the most thoughtful and kind people that I've met within the village. You know, anytime it appears that something may be bothering you or, you know, something, you just seem off on a day, Marge is going to be the first person to text you and say, hey, you know what, you seemed really upset that day. Are you okay? Is everything all right? And I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of your kind words, your thoughtfulness, to the way that you approach the village, the way that you approach your colleagues. I will miss having conversations about some of those deeper topics that everyone has talked about. I know we've had stormwater conversations and land use and just general governance, but I'm most going to miss that, just that kindness that not everybody gets to see, and I'm glad I got to be a part of that, and I hope that it is not goodbye.
Rich?
So I had the opportunity of meeting Marge Earl back in 2015 because she was sitting in the one, two, three, four, five, sixth row, and she was there every Tuesday night that these people were up there, and I thought, wow, this person's really knowledgeable, she's really involved, and she must be like the queen of Downers Grove, because she knows everybody, she knows everything. And I came to find out that she'd been sitting in one of those seats for the nine years prior to that, and then I came to know that she was on the ZBA, and then a little bit later that year, I got to serve with her and under her leadership and tutelage. We also serve on the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance, so not only does she donate her time and efforts here, and you give them last Thursday of the month, she's in a PDHA meeting adding her value around things like historic preservation, you know, the natural preservation, the preservation of our culture in Downers Grove. She also is really kind of an expert on planning and zoning and sitting on the comprehensive plan. If you've ever read it, it's a long document, but she was involved in the guts of it in creating all of that, and you really do have to drill down. I had like a page full of notes, other people have covered about three-quarters of it. So the thing that I want to close with is, this woman has just the biggest heart for people, and because she was formerly a registered nurse, and occasionally I do things like tearing hamstrings or, you know, getting COVID pneumonia, she was a wealth of information, showed me real caring and concern, and that was the concern- showed me real caring and concern, and that was the concern and the love she has for Downers Grove. So, your service is going to be very much missed. Having that institutional knowledge, very valuable up here. Because if you wanted to know things that we tried many years ago that maybe didn't succeed for some reason or another, Marge had that background. We don't always vote the same. As a matter of fact, we probably disagreed more in votes than, you know, in other situations with other people. But she always had this unique perspective and this uncanny eye for detail, the things she would pick up on that were nuanced, that were minute, but became big when it came to drill down on them. So, she always was prepared, always did her work and her love for the village. Now, her love for her family is coming up. So, it's been an honor serving with you, and I consider an honor having you as my friend.
Doug?
Thank you for all the wonderful things to communicate.
Thank you.
Supplies are limited.
Marge, the floor is yours.
You're making me cry. I'm so sorry. This time during COVID has been really difficult. And it has taken a lot out of me personally with some of the things that have been going on in my family life. The health of some of my family members, the deterioration in the health in my neighbors around me. And after I had filed all of my paperwork to run again, which is what I thought I really wanted to do, somewhere around Christmas when Rich got sick, it just occurred to me that I didn't have anything left to keep giving this job. And I couldn't do it at 110% like I had been because there were an extreme amount of factors that were just dragging me down. And so, I made the decision not to campaign. I just basically put it in God's hands and said, "If I need to be sitting up here, I will be. And if I don't need to be, He'll find somebody who needs to be." And it took me a while to come to peace with that decision. And it was not an easy decision. And I rode it out, and it was tough, but I stuck to my decision. And as it turns out, there's somebody else who can do this. And I'm okay with that because I have faith that they're doing it for the right reasons. That the people who saw fit to elect me to this position have found somebody else that can do this equally as well. And I can go back to sitting in the back or helping out when it's needed and not having to read two volumes created by staff every week and, you know, put on a shelf. My office is a disaster area. I've been cleaning that out, but I just wanted you to know I have so many copies of comprehensive plans that I'm not sure which one is even current at this point. In fact, I was wondering if I should bring some of this stuff back to you because it's expensive to print, and I've got quite a bit of it. But I have enjoyed every ounce of my time here with the village. I love this town. I'm not leaving this town, and I will still be here if, probably sitting in my spot in the back, which I was sitting in last week Monday for a District 58 meeting. So, I have, my passion isn't gone. I'm just worn out right now, and I need some time off. And I'm going to take it. So, life is too short not to do the things you need to do first. And maybe one day, I'll be back. Maybe one day, I'll just be sitting on a council or a commission. Or maybe one day you'll come in and you'll see me sitting in the back. Would love to talk to you. But Leslie and Nicole are both right. They both know I'm introverts and that this is extremely hard for me to sit up here and be looked at, for lack of a better word, or looked to. While for some reason, if I'm not up front and center, I can deal with that more easily. But being front and center all the time does take a toll on you if you are not an outgoing person. And I am not an outgoing person. So, thank you. Thank you for letting me sit up here. Thank you for sharing everything with me. Thank you for letting me be a part of this wonderful village. I promise to keep giving back and would like to do that together with you guys, just from a different seat. So, thank you all for having me, and God bless.
Thank you, Marge.